Good evening, welcome to the Board of Education meeting for February 2023, 16th, February 16th, 2023, excuse me. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and at this time, I'd like to call on Mrs. Peters to do our invocation.
Attitude is a choice. Happiness is a choice. Optimism is a choice. Kindness is a choice. Giving is a choice. Respect is a choice. Whatever choice you make makes you. Choose wisely. By Roy Bennett.
Thank you. And I'd like to call Ms. Ted up to introduce the student who's going to lead us in our pledge.
Good evening. We have Quinn Hartman, 4th grade student.
May all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you tell me what her name was again?
Quinn Hartman.
Quinn? Quinn. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. And our school spotlight at this time now is with Ms. Ted and her group that are principal at WT Griggs.
With you, Chairman Craft, Board of Education Members, and Dr. Lutz. I am Barbara Tind, a proud principal of Dr. WT Griggs Elementary School. So Ms. Ryan and I appreciate the opportunity to highlight some great experiences and opportunities that are happening this year at Griggs. They include our PTO Title I Family Engagement Monthly Meetings and Celebrations. We're really excited that our parents, staff, and students have had the opportunity to come into our building monthly and celebrate the learning at Griggs.
Good evening. As most of you know, I'm Kristy Ryan, Shared Assistant Principal of the Southern Elementary Schools, both Griggs and Jarvisburg Elementary School. As part of the Griggs School Improvement Team and an integral part of our school improvement plan, this year we have focused on increasing communication with parents, guardians, about expectations and the importance of the curriculum and the home. One of our overall goals is to increase involvement with all GES Griggs stakeholders, including students, families, district, Board of Education, and the community. To help accomplish this goal, we have held, as Mrs. Ted said, Monthly Title I in conjunction with PTO Nights at Griggs Elementary. As educators, we all understand that it truly takes all stakeholders to grow our students academically, behaviorally, and socially.
Hello, I'm Tess Marler, and this is my second year as the Title I teacher at Griggs. We have chosen to use our parent and family engagement funds to make sure that every child goes home with a book every time, every month. So they get to take a book home, and we provide food for the families so that that's not a barrier to being able to come and participate in the nights. Our PTO is wonderful. They help us plan and do all of the activities, and we have a teaching spotlight for each event because the goal of the Title I PTO Night is to put resources in the hands of our kids and our families to help them help their children learn. And so, the feedback from families, we do collect a lot of information back from our families to make sure that what we're doing is meeting their needs, and it has been overwhelmingly positive, and they do like the monthly nights. Thank you.
Hi, it's so nice to be here with you. My name is Havelinovsker, and I'm the Instructional Coach at Griggs. I'm going to share some of our attendance at these events. Our staff has shown up so amazingly. The first two events that we held, our Back to School Night and our Fall Family Festival, had 100% staff attendance. At our Back to School Night, we served 45 families with a total of 145 people that night. Our Fall Family Festival, we had 124 families and over 406 people in our building. Our December Craft and Hobby Fair, 73% of our staff attended. We served 30 families for 87 people total. And then our last event in January, our Literature and Art Night, 57% of our staff attended, 25 families, and 87 people total. I want you to note, January 26th was a workday, and we still had that kind of turnout.
Good evening. I'm Amy Hartman. I'm the GES PTO President. And with the events that we've had this year, the four that you see here, what we did is incorporation with Title I, provided our families with food, whether it be snacks, or pizza, or something, you know, very healthy and hearty, so that our families didn't have to worry or stress about, you know, coming home, making dinner for their children, and then worrying about whether or not they're going to be able to make a fun event that's going to give them those educational strategies that are going to help their students at home, while also enjoying the evening with crafts and fun items that the children can take home, and overall just having a really great time, while also fundraising so that we can continue to provide these events, and for our children to have those free books and to be able to come into the building and, you know, get outside of school and be in the building and be able to see how much fun it is to be there in the evening while also learning. I also have my daughter here, Quinn Hartman, who's had the opportunity to attend all of the events. You know, mom has to be there, so does she, but she also wants to be there, and she enjoys going to these things. And so, I'd like to bring her up and just ask her what her favorite events have been and what she's looking forward to for the remainder of the school year.
Quinn, go ahead.
I would have to say Back to School Night because I was able to meet both of my teachers, learn about them, and get a glimpse of my classroom, which decreased my first day jitters. My second favorite was the Art Festival because my friend Lola and I worked really hard on a project that was displayed, and it made me really proud. I am looking forward to the Spring Carnival because you get to come after school and do fun activities and see more of your teachers and friends.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you for sharing. Thank you so much.
So thank you so much. We hope you all have the opportunity to come to one of our events coming up. Our next one is next Thursday. It is our Math Night, sorry, Family Fitness and Math Night. We're highlighting family fitness activities, healthy food, and every grade level will be doing some math activities, so I hope you can make it out. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I love your shirts. Thank you for recognizing our parent, PTOs, PTAs, organizations at schools because I know firsthand, being the president of one, it is very rewarding, but it's a lot of work, and it makes a big difference. I think most principals will say, when you have a good support, it makes a lot of difference. So even though she ringing out, I'm sure she had five other things to do, but I know we all, we've probably all done it in some capacity, but thank you for recognizing those.
Appreciate it. Yes. It's now time for our school growth recognition. And Dr. Lutz will be presenting plaques for these schools. So the schools that we're going to call out are all met growth, and so we'll start with WT Griggs. Ms. Ted, if you'll come forward, please. And Knott's Island, Mr. Goins. Jarvisburg, Ms. Iorio. Elementary, Ms. Kelly. Shawboro Elementary, Ms. Nelson. Central Elementary, Ms. Ferris. Moyack Middle School, Ms. Reynolds. And then two schools that exceeded growth, Currituck County Middle School and Ms. Daniels will be accepting that. And JP Knapp, Mr. Lowe.
Yes, and I'm sorry, and a standing graduation rate for Knapp as well. Let's give them all a big hand.
Thank you so much for all you do.
I think we just witnessed something. I think we, every month we meet as an administrative leadership group across the district, and we've made sure to include our assistant principals over the course of the past two years. And I really love how our principals just called the APs up along with them. That recognizes the importance of the teamwork. So that was a really nice gesture. Well done. I'll make sure I have your names on there next time, too.
Yeah, I was reading.
That was me.
Okay. So this year, I mean, this month is Career and Technical Education Month, and so I'd like to call Ms. Jennifer Woods up. She's our CTE Director, and she's going to do a presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. Dr. Lutz, thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. CTE stands for Career and Technical Education. The courses, programs, and pathways are preparing students with an academic foundation coupled with technical hands-on learning experiences. Governor Roy Cooper has recently deemed February CTE Month, and we're excited to celebrate all the Currituck CTE happenings with you tonight. So Kelly Greenwell, Haley Bartolata, and myself support, promote, counsel, guide all courses and pathways to provide a systematic framework for Currituck students in grades 5 through 12. We begin in 5th grade with career awareness, where students are introduced to careers at the elementary levels. When students then enter middle school, they transition into career exploration with learning about themselves and how the different careers can fit into their world. As students transition to high school, they dive into career development, completing program pathways, and preparing them for post-secondary experiences. Currituck CTE has 17 teachers at two high schools and two middle schools in which courses and pathways are provided for these students. We also provide Career and Technical Student Organizations, which is also known as CTSOs. They enhance the student learning through instruction, leadership, applied learning, and real-world applications. The CTSOs align with the career clusters and pathways provided in Currituck schools. At the end of each semester, specific CTE courses require a state assessment, and I'm happy to announce that in the fall semester, we had nine out of our 12 programs receive the proficiency of 70% or better. CTE is required also to follow up with our graduated students to determine secondary placement, such as enrolling in secondary education or trade schools, enlisting in the military, or being employed in the workforce. 92% of 2022 Currituck graduates have obtained this post-secondary placement. All students have the opportunity of obtaining an industry credential. Industry credentials provide students with a documented skill set, making them more marketable and better prepared for employment. 190 credentials were earned this fall from industry credentials such as OSHA 10, CPR First Aid, Microsoft Word, and PowerPoint. So we have a couple of exciting things happening. Certainly just hot off the press, we're deciding on a couple of things happening. First of all, we are having our Career and Job Fair for our high school students. This will be at Currituck High School during the lunches. We have businesses calling every single day wanting to be a part of this, both for summer employment and also for full-time work for our students. If you know of any businessers or industries that like to participate, they can reach out to Kelly Greenwell at the high school. And then we are also excited to announce we're going to have a Career Signing Day this year to celebrate those graduating students who will either enroll in a CTE pathway post-secondary, enlist in the military, or employ with the company. We're working out these details, but we are super excited about this. This will be happening at Currituck High School, May 16th. It will include both high schools, JP Knapp and Currituck High. So we're excited about that. So our next big exciting news, if you drove by on the freeway today, you will notice a big bus outside of JP Knapp, and we just had this bus roll up today for our JP Knapp students, and we'll play a little video, and I'll talk a little bit more about that.
The work Be Pro, Be Proud does to empower the next generation of workers is second to none.
It's a program for North Carolina, and it will go from one end of the state to the other.
Students need to know what their alternatives are for careers. This is going to expose students to many, many different opportunities that they have.
I know what it means for so many kids in this state who think today, as they sit there, they don't know what they're going to do next.
This is an option that provides a great life and a wonderful life-sustaining wage. This can bring generational change to communities in our state.
Our kids want to experience things. They want to touch it. They want to feel it. And with the interactive ability of the machines that they have, whether it's truck driving or welding, they're getting the feeling of hands-on learning. When you can not just read about it or hear about it, but when you can see it in a real-world way, that's the way you attract attention, and that's the way you generate interest, but could literally change young people's lives.
One thing I realized real quick is, we do a disservice as a society to tell students they have to have a four-year bachelor degree to be successful.
We have got to stop telling our students that that is the only way to achieve the American dream.
If something like this was available to me at a young age, it would have opened my eyes and allowed me to see different avenues besides just the four-year university avenue.
This shows that the public and private partnership works. This is how we can get things done.
We have to start with generating interest from young people, to fit people into jobs where they can make money and where the need is in North Carolina.
What you don't see, though, is the energy and passion brought by literally hundreds of individuals working to inspire the next generation to succeed. I am pleased to tell you that we're succeeding. These things work.
So this bus was just outside of, sorry, JP Knapp today, and the 9th and 10th graders all participated, and they go in 45-minute increments to learn about all the different opportunities that they have on this mobile unit. It will be coming back in September for three days, where we will have our Currituck High School students and our 8th grade students participate well in this. I would like to thank the County Commissioners, COA, Currituck Board of Education for passing the Diploma Track Resolution and preparing our students for opportunities in the workforce right here in Currituck. So that's pretty exciting. Another exciting thing happening at our middle school, starting in the fall, we will have them, we obtain a modernization grant, which will allow more exposure to the different pathways at both middle schools. We'll have a Paxton Patterson Lab at Currituck Middle School and also another one at Moyack Middle School. And then the last slides are just some of the things that have been happening this year. We're really excited about, students getting excited about what's next after high school and where they're going with their lives. And thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Parker and I went through that bus today, and it was amazing. Really amazing. Yeah, so I'm excited that our students will get the opportunity to do that in September. Okay. We've come to our Public Comment Session. The Public Comment Session is a time when an individual or group can address the board about our schools. This is not a time to speak about issues or concerns involving identifiable personnel or students. Matters of this nature should be submitted in writing to the superintendent, and your concerns will be addressed. Individuals or groups will be called in the order in which they signed up, and will be asked to limit their remarks to three minutes, and please state your name and address when you come up. And the first person who signed up is Michael Blager.
Blazer.
Blazer, okay.
And 102 King Fisher Cove, Rogers Edge. I am addressing the urinal problems, the petitions at Moyack Middle School, and I just got a...
Good evening.
This is my first year at Moyack Middle School, and so far, I think it's been great. But recently, though, there's been a slight change, I've seen. There's no urinal petitions in the school at all. So, and I'm saying, these petitions would give all the young men at the school privacy when they're doing their business. So I follow the news, okay? And I've seen that the budget cuts have been harsh, and I would like you to consider this privacy occurrence. And to prepare my presentation, I did the research for how much the materials would cost. These would cost around $400 to $600. Now, I continued my research and see that there was five bathrooms in the school, not including the softball or baseball team. I have not been out there yet. After doing the math, I've seen that there comes to about $3,000 to $5,000. Now, in my opinion, that's not a lot with kids' privacy. So it would greatly help the male population at our school. I hope you consider this much-needed addition to our school with discussing the next budget cuts or budget things. Thank you for your time. And if you need it, I do have the source of my math, if you would say. So if you do need it, I have it on my source. Would you like it?
Sure, we'll take it. Sure. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I appreciate you bringing that concern to our attention. Thank you. Thank you so much. And secondly, Jamie Miller.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Lutz. I just wanted to sign up for Public Comment tonight to publicly thank the Knights of Columbus with the Holy Redeemer Catholic Church down in Kitty Hawk. They fundraise all year, every year, and raise money for Special Olympics, Deere County Schools, and Currituck County Schools, specific to students with special needs. And this year, they gave a generous donation that benefited 12 of our EC teachers from pre-K to speech therapy to resource teacher to physical therapist, so they could buy items that would help strengthen their practice and meet their students' needs. So this year, they also gave us the opportunity to help them with fundraising because they were short-staffed one day. So they reached out to us, and our EC teachers showed up and filled the whole day, and it was a wonderful experience. So I just want to thank them for recognizing our teachers year after year.
Thank you. Next, our Student Board Member Report. Sophia?
Okay, so I'm going to start off with Central Elementary. Central Elementary School has enjoyed celebrating students' achievements during our award ceremonies. We are also excited to hold our very first Booster-athon event beginning February 22nd. We are looking forward to earning money for classroom supplies and materials. Thank you in advance to all our families who always support us. We are very grateful for your generosity. Central's PTO Organized A Fund Valentine's Grams for students to spread friendship and goodwill with their friends. CCHS. There will be a Parent Night for Currituck Families for anyone who is interested in dual enrollment, being hosted by COA. Attendance is required and will be both in-person and virtual. The link will be sent out to those who are not able to attend in person. The date for this is Wednesday, March 1st at 6:00 p.m. The ACT will be administered on March 8th, 2023. This is a mandatory assessment for all juniors. CCHS will host our academic celebration on February 24th, 2023. CCMS had a fantastic turnout at our Semester One Award Ceremony and Blood Drive on February 10th. Currituck Middle has enjoyed our recent visits from JP Knapp and CCHS, as our 8th graders get excited to start registration process to head to high school next year. Griggs Elementary School had our monthly Title I PTO Family Engagement Night this past month. Our spotlight was having Heart and Art. Ms. Lasher read a book to the students and parents and staff. Were able to vote on their favorite art piece. The top winner's art went to the credit union to be hung up for all visitors to see. Our February Title I PTO Night will be held February 23rd from 5:00 to 6:00. Our spotlight will be Family Fitness with a focus on grade-level math games and enrichment for students and parents. JP Knapp. JPK Recruitment Season is in full swing. We've hosted a virtual information session, a face-to-face information session, and an open house visit for prospective students and their families. We have had great turnouts from families at each session, as well as huge turnout for student volunteers helping at open house. JPK hosted a Be Pro, Be Proud workshop today. The mobile workshop aims to introduce students to many skilled professions that may be of interest to them. COA was also on the JP Knapp campus for a while, explaining the program they have that correlates with what students saw in the exhibit. Jarvisburg Elementary had a very successful Title I Family Reading Night. Teachers and staff worked hard to plan literacy events that aligned with our character-strong lessons. Our first semester awards for students was successful and widely attended by our families. We're wrapping up Valentine's and 100th Day of School festivities, looking forward to all great things that spring will bring. Knott's Island Elementary started this new semester celebrating the accomplishments of our students with our first semester awards ceremony on February 3rd. We are so proud of the hard work of our students. We also started our major fundraiser event for the school year with our Read-a-thon. We have had a great first few days and are optimistic that this event will help us add additional resources to our STEM Room. Moyack Elementary School wrapped up a successful Parent Information Night last Thursday. While the adults listened to classroom teachers talk about their instructions, students got to interact with snakes and spiders, thanks to JB Rattles. Also, Booster-athon just kicked off this week, and families are invited to the culminating event, the Glow Run next Thursday, February 23rd. Moyack Middle School celebrations are abundant. Our wrestlers placed in first place in the AAC Wrestling Tournament. Our cheerleaders also under their season, replacing first at their cheer comp. We are proud to share that 7th grade student Josh Turner was spotlighted as the North Carolina FPLA Member of the Week. Students at MMS are looking forward to the Athletic Booster-sponsored sneaker dance on May 3rd. Lastly, Shawboro Elementary had a fabulous Booster-athon fun run. This annual fundraiser earned the school over $28,000 for school and classroom materials and enhancements. We can't wait to share all of the amazing things we are looking to purchase with this money. Thank you to all the families and friends of Mistings students for supporting our school.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll have the Work Session Review.
student volunteers helping it open house. JPK hosted a Be Pro, Be Proud Workshop today. The mobile workshop aims to introduce students to many skilled professions that may be of interest to them. COA was also on the JP Knapp campus for a while explaining the program they have that correlates with what students saw in the exhibit. Jarvisburg Elementary had a very successful Title I Family Reading Night. Teachers and staff worked hard to plan literacy events that aligned with our Character Strong lessons. Our first semester awards for students was successful and widely attended by our families. We're wrapping up Valentine's and 100th Day of School festivities, looking forward to all great things that spring will bring. Notts Island Elementary started this new semester celebrating the accomplishments of our students with our first semester awards ceremony on February 3rd. We are so proud of the hard work of our students. We also started our major fundraiser event for the school year with our Read-a-thon. We have had a great first few days and are optimistic that this event will help us add additional resources to our STEM room. Moyac Elementary School wrapped up a successful Parent Information Night last Thursday. While the adults listened to classroom teachers talk about their instructions, students got to interact with snakes and spiders thanks to JB Rattles. Also, Booster-thon just kicked off this week and families are invited to the culminating event, the Glow Run next Thursday, February 23rd. Moyac Middle School celebrations are abundant. Our wrestlers placed in first place in the AAC Wrestling Tournament. Our cheerleaders also under their season are placing first at their cheer comp. We are proud to share that seventh grade student Josh Turner was spotlighted as the North Carolina FBLA Member of the Week. Students at MMS are looking forward to the Athletic Booster-sponsored sneaker dance on May 3rd. Lastly, Shawboro Elementary had a fabulous Booster-thon fundraiser. This annual fundraiser earned the school over $28,000 for school and classroom materials and enhancements. We can't wait to share all of the amazing things we are looking to purchase with this money. Thank you to all the families and friends of Mustang students for supporting our school.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll have the work session review.
During our work session review, uh, we went over the district strategic plan. We're going to do that again here in a few minutes. We also had a, uh, really robust discussion around our school safety update, uh, led by Virginia Arrington. And we also had a discussion around the school calendar for this upcoming year and again, the challenges faced with the calendar school law and our desire to begin, uh, in August and end before Christmas, a semester, and then afterwards and the challenges we face. So we'll be bringing more of that information forward, um, next month.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, at this time, we need approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as, um, written?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There is none, the motion carries. Um, and so at this point in time, uh, Mrs. Doughty will be going over the district strategic plan update. So we're looking forward to that.
Good evening Chairman Kraft, Members of the Board, Dr. Lutz. This evening, I'm happy to share with you and the public updates and new revisions to our district strategic plan. For the public, I'd like to take a quick minute to recap a little bit about our strategic planning process. In March of 2021, Currituck County Schools began the work of creating a district strategic plan. District leadership acknowledged that the district was full of hard-working and talented individuals who were working hard at their respective jobs to improve student outcomes. But their work was often in silos. There was no common framework for those improvement initiatives and no common way to measure outcomes. Therefore, the district partnered with Mitchin Group to facilitate the development of a strategic plan. During the strategic planning process, over 400 stakeholders participated in listening session, over less, listening sessions. Over 7,500 data points were collected. These, uh, sessions were attended by staff, students, parents, elected officials, business owners, and community members alike. 136 individual and individuals were, individual interviews were conducted by members of our leadership team. Tonight, I'm going to highlight just some of the improvement initiatives that have happened in their year two of our plan. We will post these updates to our school website, so for the public, if you'll check in our scrolling headlines tomorrow, this information will be posted. In the essence of time, I'm going to highlight some of the initiatives that we've accomplished thus far. Goal one focuses on developing the whole student. Some of the things that we've worked to accomplish this first school year, second year of our plan, this year, is highlighting our Tier One Social and Emotional Learning Curriculum. Many of our families may be aware that students are coming home talking about the lessons and activities they're doing as part of Character Strong, which has been implemented K-12. Also in this plan, we've talked about working to create a, a pathway so that every student understands what happens to them once they enter high school and how to exit high school with a plan in place to either enroll, enlist, or employ. This year, we've contracted with Naviance, which is a customizable feature that allows us to help develop those plans, share those plans with teachers, counselors, and parents alike. So right now, all of our high school counselors, as well as JP Knapp's staff and their counselor, have been trained on Naviance. We will be piloting the Naviance rollout with students this spring at JP Knapp Early College and this summer, we'll be working to make sure that our high school and middle schools are prepared for the rollout of Naviance. We're also working with COA to make sure that we have updated articulation agreements. Many of our folks understand that if I take a college class, I can articulate that credit back to my high school transcript as an elective or a core class. What most folks don't realize is that sometimes when I take high school classes, I can also articulate that, that class to the college and add it to my college transcript. So we're working with COA to make sure that we finalize those plans and have a, an updated list of articulated credits so our counselors and our parents and students can navigate that. Also, we've had a lot of discussion recently about accreditation for Currituck County Schools. Originally, when we had the discussion about, um, trying to attain accreditation, it was going to focus strictly on Currituck County High School. DPI no longer offers an accreditation process for high schools across North Carolina that's been put on pause. As such, we then went out and looked for another accreditation agency. We are happy to report that in November of this past year, we signed an agreement with Cognia, not only to pursue accreditation for Currituck County High School, but for every school in our district. Currently, where we are with Cognia is there are two phases to the process. The first is, uh, a candidacy phase. And in that candidacy phase, we have to submit information to Cognia with, uh, self-assessment and then they come onboard and do an onsite visit, which is tentatively scheduled for March of this year. And once we, they review our self-assessments and do our onsite visit, then they deem whether or not we are ready to move into the actual accreditation phase and that will be Phase Two. So right now, we're waiting for that March onsite vision, visit for them to review our information with the hopes that they approve us to move into the accreditation process. In that process is when our small group of district staff moves into a much larger group of stakeholders that will participate, from parents, to our community members, to our higher ed partners, to our staff, to our administrators, all will be involved in that process as we move forward. In the work session, it was asked if the public can see what standards were held to accreditation and we will, as Ms. Parker asked us, make sure that we post on there what those standards look like as we move into that accreditation process. So again, be on the lookout for that information to be posted. By fall of 2024, we also talked about establishing mental health partnerships and we are happy to report that we have the first day treatment program focused on mental health, uh, to support students who may be having mental health crises that take away from their ability to access the academic part, part of their day. So we have a program at Currituck County Middle School that's currently servicing five students and we look to increase that number as we grow. Our second goal, and again, perhaps one of the most important goals, focuses on our teaching staff and the pipeline to recruit and retain highly qualified personnel here in our district. Twice a year, we offer personalized PD to all of our staff so that they get a choice in what to attend and helping them to grow based on their needs as a professional. We also offer surveys and feedback to our staff to make sure that they have an idea of the successes of those surveys, uh, of the successes of those professional development sessions. We're happy to report that we will be sharing publicly those survey results with all of our staff. Administrators and directors are also actively participating now in the recruitment process for our schools. We're excited that we will be hosting for the first time ever an in-house job fair in the spring of 2023 and a recruitment video is soon to come out on behalf of the HR Department and with Mike Martine and iCandy Digital Video to help us assist us with the recruitment process. In the board work session, I highlighted just a little bit about the scary part of this initiative and goal two. While we cannot control how many folks enter into the educational pipeline anymore, we absolutely can control retaining the best of the brightest for us here in Currituck County Schools. You'll notice on the final part of that, uh, goal, that we retained 21 out of 25 beginning teachers from last year to this year. We definitely attribute that to the one-on-one coaching support for new staff and new members to Currituck County by our instructional coaching team. And our final goal focuses on the community engagement that you heard in Griggs Elementary School's presentation. In this goal, we talked a lot about streamlining our processes and procedures. Probably the number one thing we heard in all those 7,500 data points that we collected was the need for consistency in our policies and our procedures. This past year, we focused on our codes of conduct and making sure that they were normed by grade level spans K-5, 6, 8, and 9, 12. Those are now updated and posted to our websites. Our handbooks are updated yearly and our curricular strategic plan provides consistent parameters and expected use resources for all staff. We've done a great job as building administration and teachers and weekly communications being sent out from their offices to their staff and to their stakeholders. Dojo is being used widely by all K-5 schools for parent communication and we're exploring the option of 612 using Remind as their parent communication resource. You heard most in the updates that Sophia shared with you all about our awards recognition assemblies. We really wanted to make sure our buildings were focusing on the academic celebrations as well as the athletic celebrations in their buildings. So twice a year, they are holding at a minimum academic award celebrations to celebrate the hard work of our students in our buildings. Some goals that we plan on working toward and in addition to finishing this year two of the plan and moving into year three that we're going to share with you, includes increasing our district cohort graduation rate. One of the glaring statistics that stood out to us, even though you heard JP Knapp be recognized for their, um, high graduation rate, is that we can do better. Any student that we lose is not something that we want to have happen. So one of the goals moving into year three of our plan will be to focus on increasing our cohort graduation rate by identifying our ATRA students early and providing a mentorship program to those students to make sure they understand there's still hope in finishing their high school diploma. Also, looking at the staff, uh, in-house job fair, that was one of the things we talked about that we hope to accomplish this spring. And then finally, continuing to streamline our processes and build consistency in our procedures, we're going to look strongly at our HR processes as well as our attendance policy moving forward into the summer work so that the start of next school year, those policies will be in place for all schools and all students. And then finally, making sure that 100% of our schools have formal parent-teacher organizations so that parents see a way to volunteer and be active in our school communities. And that's all I have. Any questions? I know we talked quite a bit extensively, that's just a brief overview of what we shared in our work session this evening.
Thank you so much. Thank you. At this time, we'll have a construction update from Dr. Lutz.
Every month, we take a look at the pictures and the, and where we're at with both Moyac Elementary School, Moyac Middle School. The completion date will be, the school will be ready to roll both of these buildings, uh, in August of this upcoming school year. Certainly, we need the space at both of our buildings, especially Moyac Elementary. You can see the incredible progress month over month, uh, with the brick. Uh, we are so pleased with our builder Sussex. Uh, we, we visited the sites today, had the opportunity, there were at least 50 to 60 workers onsite and everyone, uh, contributing, doing their job. And, uh, ultimately, you, we're going to get a great product at the end of this, this process. Moyac Middle School, again, the easier of the two projects. Uh, we have doubled the size of the cafeteria, much needed. I'm speaking of our cafeterias. Moyac Middle School continues to serve all of Moyac Elementary School. Uh, this is over 1,300 students total. Shout out again to both the staffs and the outstanding school nutrition work that's going on there. The interiors of Moyac Middle School will soon be painted. We had to get the, uh, air conditioning units electric and everything in first so we can keep the climate controlled before we move forward. Most excited about tonight's update is the Talls Creek site. We hear the renderings of the new Talls Creek Site Elementary School. We'll make sure, again, this will be posted online after the meeting for people to take a look at. The architect is boomerang, you can see there, I'm in the bottom corner. We gathered input from all of the stakeholders, um, that will be using this building, from our teachers to our custodians, to school nutrition, to our educa, uh, exceptional children services, um, our physical therapy, our secretaries, our, uh, principals. We made sure that we gathered all the information we can so that they can build a building that's built for educators, that are, that's built for students. Um, and it's not just an off-the-box, off-the-shelf, uh, building. Um, and we're proud to be working again with our county commissioners who are so gracious in our funding and moving forward this project. That project should kick off, uh, November of this year. Um, I will let the public know that the site itself will actually be used as farmland, uh, this spring and into the fall and then it'll be cleared and then we'll move forward with our construction at that point. Any questions?
Thank you. Um, we did, um, tour the Moyac Elementary and Moyac Middle today and, um, it was amazing.
I did want to add one other thing, that, uh, we will be seeking input on the, about the mascot of the school and the interior colors. Look, we'll unveil our grand plan to get public input along with our student input, which will be quite exciting in the near future.
Okay, our next, um, on the agenda is, uh, budget amendments. Ms. Mazel.
Evening, Madam Chair, fellow board members and Dr. Lutz. Well, this evening's agenda, I have budget amendments for your approval, starting with the State Public School Fund. We went over this one in a little more in-depth than the work session. We have a decrease here of $265,530.69. We had a reversion and we also received allotments. So the reversion.
Thank you. Reversion was to classroom teachers, teacher assistants, supplies and materials, state textbooks, and CTE program support. We also received funding for behavioral support, test and performance bonus pay, classroom teachers, specific to new teacher orientation, CTE expansion grant, and a new CTE modernization grant. Next one in your packet is local expenditures. This is a net of zero here. This was doing budget transfers from instructional services to system-wide support to help, um, facilitate our maintenance department who is in need. The next one in your packet is federal expenditures. We have an increase here of $15,701. We received funding for IDEA targeted preschool, which was their initial allotment for the year. Additional funding for the CTE program improvement as well as amendments to McKinney-Vento Grant, the State Improvement Grant, and S3 Math Enrichment Program. Next for capital outlay, we have an increase of $302,219.81. This was to budget for the Currituck County High School Roof Coating Phase Two out of our new Public School Repair and Renovation Fund, which is another lottery bucket that we have to work with. And again, just for everyone's knowledge, this is not money that flows to us, it goes through the county, so they actually take care of the bills for us and we just book the entries. And there was some sale of fixed assets for technology as well. And then the last one in the packet is the other local revenues or fund date. We had an increase of $22,606.06. This was budgeting for Chromebook fees, Medicaid fee for service reimbursement, and a donation to our PASS program. Any questions?
Um, could you just, um, give a little more information about, um, the first budget amendment, more like what you gave us for the public?
The reversion? Yes, uh-huh. Okay. So in late March, beginning of April, DPI gives us an ADM number, which stands for Average Daily Membership. And they give that to us so that we can budget for the next year and so that they can build their initial allotments that they give us. When we get into the school year around the end of October, they start looking at our Power School data to see how close we actually got to their projection. If you don't get close enough to their projection, they can take money back from you, which is what has happened in this case. It doesn't impact every state allotment that we have, but it impacts the ones where ADM is part of the funding formula.
Did you prepare for that?
Yes, sir.
And I believe you said that they don't, they, they don't take back as much as they gave us, they take back.
That's true. So they have a calculation sheet because they can give you money if you, if you come in with more students than they expected, they can give you funding. They use the same calculation sheet, but when they take the money back, they only take back half of the amount, they don't take back the full amount.
So a little bit of a silver lining.
It is, it is a silver lining.
And what happened in 21, 22?
In 21, 22, we came in higher than expected, so they had to give us funding.
Okay.
So we've swung the other direction this year.
Okay, okay. Just wanted everybody to be aware that we, we kind of knew it was coming, so you made preparation for it and.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So this is, uh, we need to take action on this. Do I have a motion that we approve the budget amendments as, uh, Ms. Mazel, um, stated for us?
I make a motion that we approve the budget amendments as described by Ms. Mazel.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a first and a second. Any more, just any discussion, any other discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so the budget amendments are approved. Thank you, Ms. Mazel. Next, we have field trip requests. Dr. Lutz?
Moyac Middle School All District Honor Band took place, uh, in Greenville in early February. This past week, we had the Indoor Track State Meet in Winston-Salem. I think we had seven participants in that. We had the Wrestling Regionals in Moorhead City, also the, over this past weekend. And we, well, not on this report, but we sent three wrestlers off to state championships today. We also had the State Swim Meet in Cary, North Carolina this past weekend. And JP Knapp FBL State Leadership Conference is coming up in Greensboro in March.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to, that we, um, Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. All right. Information items, our next Board of Education meeting is March 16th. The work session will be at 4:00 PM at the PLC. And then the Board of Education meeting is here at the Historic Courthouse at 6:30. And then we will have board member comments. Ms. Rose, we'll start with you.
Okay. So I was able to visit with the schools this month, and I liked everything I was seeing. Lots of good things going on in their schools and, of course, had lots of fun with my reading buddy. I'm excited about the upcoming SpongeBob musical. I see they're already practicing for that. I'd like to give a shout out to Currituck Kids. They have recently been able to provide 27 grants to help with mental health projects. Is that correct, Ms. Reynolds, Ms. Taylor?
Yeah, 27 grants to all 10 schools represented.
That's awesome.
That's great.
We appreciate that. I'd like to congratulate many of their athletes who did go on to state competition. They make Currituck proud. And today, I enjoyed touring the schools that are under construction, as Dr. Lutes mentioned. And you all are going to love them once they open up, and they will really, they are really needed. Got a lot of kids in Currituck. And one more thing, we've got the Currituck Education Foundation is holding a fundraiser on February the 24th at BJ's from 5:30 to 8:30. And we will have some local celebrity servers that evening trying to get tips to help the foundation, including our own Dr. Lutes, and Bobby Hannig, and Josh Bass, and Paul O'Neal, and Selena Jarvis. So make plans to come out and have dinner that night and support the Education Foundation. The Education Foundation supports their schools through scholarships and many grants to classroom teachers to benefit their students.
That's all. Okay, Ms. Parker?
Thank you to the staff and students, who I know you work hard each and every day. And thank you to the parents. We've had so many parents that have been actively engaged in our schools. And also to those of you who have taken the time to reach out with concerns. I have had a lot of questions about accreditation, and I want to thank Ms. Doughty for addressing those concerns with her strategic plan update and her commitment to publicizing that information. I think that's going to go a long way to making the community feel very confident that we're on the way to accreditation. I'm excited that our school leadership has committed to that. And I'm confident that it's going to take work, but that the work we put in is going to pay dividends for our community. Finally, thank you to Ms. Woods for her CTE presentation. It is no secret that I am the only person in the county that did not support that resolution. But my lack of support for that is not a lack of support for CTE. I know that you do great things for our children. And then just in the future, I am asking for Dr. Lutes and Ms. Doughty to please provide that information on the Math 1, 2, and 3 failure rates so that we can just look at data. I just want to make sure we're doing, as school leadership, what we ask teachers to do every day. We ask teachers to look at data before they make decisions. And we need to make sure that we're modeling that behavior to them. And in closing, a quote, "Perfection is not attainable, but if we chase perfection, we can catch excellence." Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I had an opportunity today to, I don't like microphones. I had an opportunity today to go by the Currituck, the Moyoc Elementary School. And just to ride by that building, you wouldn't realize how large that addition is. But I'm excited for everybody to see how big that facility actually is. It's, I think we're getting additional 10 classrooms, correct?
Ten.
We lost six because of construction. But 16 new classrooms, very large cafeteria there. And it's quite impressive to go see that. And speaking of the cafeteria, I know Dr. Lutes already mentioned it. What they're doing at Moyoc Middle is to provide those kids and actually transport all that food to feed all the kids at Moyoc Elementary School. I think sometimes we don't look at logistics of that, but it's quite impressive that they can, that that staff can pull that off as well.
Okay. Ms. Peters?
Well, today, I think today's the 100th day of school. So I know there were some celebrations of that. We'd like to just thank our counselors for, this is February, is the counselor appreciation month, I think. I know that they wear many hats. We have 11 of them, so thank you for all you do. It's Bus Appreciation Week. I know there's been lots of love. I've seen lots of the schools doing things for their bus drivers. And I just want all of them to know how much we appreciate them. They are a big part of our school system. They get our kids to and from school every day. So thank you for all that you do for us. And then I think yesterday was School Resource Officer Day. We have four of those in our schools. And I certainly appreciate, as well as the board, everything that they do. They are always walking around and having ears and eyes everywhere, so thank you. Ms. Kraft and I did go today at that bus at JP Knapp, the Be Pro, Be Proud. That was a very, that was a great opportunity. And I know that the high school, the Currituck County High School, will look forward to that because I'm sure they'll all hear about it. So that will be a great thing in September. And then, of course, the tours today, the schools are looking great. It is amazing how fast they've come along in this day of the effects of COVID. But those two projects, knock on wood, have seemed to go pretty well. Sussex is amazing. The superintendent was very informative today, answered all of our questions. And it is going to be exciting to have those open in August. And I attended the Moyoc Middle School Awards. And thank you, Ms. Reynolds. I know that was your first middle school semester awards. It was a great job, you and Ms. Kelton. And thank you to all of our principals who recognize the perfect attendance. We do have perfect attendance for some of our students, and I think that's a big deal. So I thank you for doing that. I think that's it. Thank you.
I'd like to thank my leadership team for their always top-notch preparation as we prepare for board meetings and all meetings and with our admin team that was here tonight. Again, I thought it was a great gesture when our principals called up the assistant principals. I think that shows the direction that we are working in one motion towards one goal, and that's to make Currituck County Schools excellent. And the teachers, and I've referred to it once mistakenly, is staffeddy, which is everybody that contributes to a child's education. And I'm not going to try to name because I will leave someone out. But it takes the whole team to get a building to become good, to become great. And you are appreciated, the efforts are appreciated. And we are going to continue to put our best foot forward here in this county. Thank you.
Yes. So I visited all our schools this month. I caught a couple of basketball games at the high school. Want to give a shout out to all our amazing bus drivers and school counselors. Congratulations to our student athletes, band members, chorus, who have all competed in different events this month. I also want to thank our sheriff's department. I was at six different award assemblies this month. And at each one, there was at least one deputy and often more who were there during the time when we had a lot of people in and out of the auditoriums and gymnasiums. So I see Mr. McCord back there. Would you please share our appreciation to the sheriff and deputies for that? Because it's very much appreciated. And with that, I think that concludes our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting this evening.
And a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming.